A precise development plan for improvements to the property and also a conditional use permit to allow the requested use on the site. West Coast Arborists want to establish a North County office and training facility. West Coast Arborist has been around since 1972 and offer professional tree services and management for public agencies. They have around 10 offices throughout California and Arizona and want to establish a North County operation to be more efficient in the North County area rather than bringing them from South County. So, to do that, they are requesting a modification to the Montiel Road Development Plan that was established in the 1980s and then included in our 1990 general plan, which includes a variety of commercial, industrial, service institutional uses, but does not specifically identify contractor services and specifically outdoor storage of equipment within the master plan. So, the master plan modification is to amend the land use matrix to include that use as a conditional use within that planned development area. And I'll go over why a conditional use later in the app or in the presentation. Little background on the site. It's approximately 1.3 acres. It's the remaining parcel undeveloped or underdeveloped parcel within that larger 15-plus acre Montiel Road Master Plan you can see here. Over the years, the master plan has been modified from primarily just commercial to a host of industrial service institutional uses. Uses now with North Coast Church located in some offices within this office complex. You have Escondido Cycle Center here primarily in this area. Oh, I mean, sorry, Escondido Cycle Center here and you have the Cube Smart self-storage facility here. So, this is the remaining parcel. You can also see it is fronts on Montiel Road here on the east. Also, the westbound transition from I-15 to Highway 78 here and fronts directly on to Highway 78 here. It's also located significantly below the freeway grades and about five to six feet below depending on the topography from Montiel Road. The picture below was taken a while ago. I used this one rather than the one with all the screenings so you can see what the site used to be used for. Originally developed as a residential structure, over the years it's been used as offices, outdoor storage, and a variety of other commercial industrial type uses. This is what it looked like before West Coast Arborist took the property. You can see the outdoor storage in the state it was in. This is after it had been cleaned up. This existing home or structure would be retained. The others on the site outbuildings would be removed. From a visual standpoint, I provide these because of the outdoor storage and the screening requirements for the Montiel Road Development Area, which requires screening from the roads and the freeway. You can see here, this is the transition from I-15 to 78, that the berming and the lower elevation views into the site are limited, especially along the freeway. You can see the existing structure here and that's sitting up at a higher elevation, probably six, seven feet above where the storage areas would be there. And these are the views into the site from Highway 78 and you can see the existing landscaping in certain places or lack of along Highway 78. You can see here primarily that all the storage areas from Highway 50 or Highway 78 would be screened by those berms and additional landscaping will be added. Primarily what you would see is the office structure on the upper elevation and you can see the existing multifamily residential across the street and how they overlook the property on Montiel Road. The first request is the modification and the language would include contractor office and support services along with fleet storage and equipment as an accessory use outdoors. However, any other equipment has, other than that, pallets, stock materials, has to be stored inside within the warehouse. So, this is just for equipment and fleet storage outside. Also, some landscape stock, since landscape stock is not a visually obtrusive thing to have on the site and that's for additional screening. And I'll show you that in this picture here. This is the typical equipment you would see stored on site. You've got the haul trucks, the chippers, some of the boom trucks, and typical stock that would be located within the outdoor areas on the site. The site plan includes the retaining the existing single-story building. It would be modified to look more commercial, similar to the designs as you see up and down Montiel Road, specifically the three properties to the west, mimicking that style, the roof lines, the architecture, and some of the colors. Montiel Road also will be improved to its ultimate width across the street frontage with curb, gutter, and sidewalk. So, taking care of that unkept, unimproved roadway. They'll also be landscaping across their entire frontage. They will be installing a small retaining wall here. The slope just sloughs off right now into the driveway and that will maintain and take care of some of that and they'll be able to have better landscape opportunities along the Montiel Road frontage. Some of the structures will be removed, exterior structures, so they can have a better through access through the project here. They'll also have an employee entry and access into the warehouse here, but the primary access to the facility would be through this driveway here on the west. It also, by having this driveway here with the trucks coming in and out, will not conflict with the radius and the turn and site distance at the corner radius on Montiel. The architecture, I'll briefly go through this, is more contemporary with varied roof lines, wall planes, and colored elements with a covered entry feature and a similar feature over the warehouse entry. The warehouse doors are set back significantly, so it's not the primary view and architecture as seen from the street. These are the other perspectives and views of the structure. Landscaping. Extensive landscaping will be provided for this project. It starts with on the entry here, you will have permeable pavers. So, as you look into the site, it's just not asphalt or concrete. And the front of the building will be enhanced by street frontage landscaping and trees. Along the frontage here, this will be fully landscaped, the parkway here, with a variety of trees and layered landscaping. So, from the Montiel Road, if you look into the site in Montiel, in this area here is probably about five or six feet below the street level. It'll provide appropriate screening for views along Montiel Road with mature trees or trees that will become mature and a layered landscaping of tall shrubs lower along the back of the sidewalk. They'll also be installing a wrought iron fence for security and also to help screen and I'll show you the picture of how they will do that. The back of the property too, because you can't count on landscaping to the Caltrans right away, we don't have control over that. So, because these areas will be used for parking and the additional 14 spaces that will be striped will be in this area here along Montiel Road. That way, any trucks are located towards the rear and farther away from Montiel Road and the end of the outdoor equipment. But the entire right-of-way along the freeway and the gaps will include trees that will further help screen the facility from the roadway and the back here. This slope, which is existing, will include additional landscaping and trees to enhance and buffer the back of that building from freeway view since the pad is elevated. This is the concept landscape plan along the roadway. You'll have a six-foot-high decorative wrought iron type fence, tube steel fence. It'll have green screening material, but on the back side to buffer some of the views in. And then this is an example of kind of that layered landscape screening for views through the site and above views looking down into the site ultimately with the trees. You'll have a more ornamental screening in front of the office business there. The, I'd also like to point out too, is the gates will not be along the right-of-way. They'll be set back into the property about 40 feet, similar to the adjacent businesses where they set their fences far back so you don't get that prison look from the roadway. The project qualifies for several environmental CEQA exemptions and the project would not have a significant impact or any impact to the environment. Staff is recommending that the city council approve the modification, precise plan and the conditional use permit. This will need to go on to council for final approval because of the modification to the land use matrix of the master plan, which requires council authorization. One condition that we'd like to add, issue has come up, what happens to fleet vehicles when you have the boom trucks? And they want to, if you see equipment storage rentals, they like to have those because they rent them out to the public and this operation does not offer services to the general public, only to public agencies, but not to have those stored in an upright position that they be kept lowered and also you don't hang flags or advertising or banners from them. The applicant is also in agreement with this condition. And that concludes staff's presentation and open up to any questions you might have.
Yeah. Does the commission have any questions of staff?
Help me understand just a little bit. I think you just explained this, but the boom trucks that, I know we have this eight-foot tall fence and we also have some screening in the front that is taller future growth trees, but those boom trucks are, how tall are those in the lowered position? How high do those get?
I would, the applicants are here to answer that. I could probably give you an example because they're very similar to a fire, a fire vehicle, which is about 12. If you look at the fire truck with the ladder, it's as different from the engines, they're about 12 to 13 feet. Don't really get there because our clearance for overhead is 13 and a half feet for those type of vehicles. So, these would be very similar to that.
Okay. I saw in specific Planning Division conditions, Appendix E number two calls for no operation of chippers or anything that would make, I assume for, we're not triggering any exemptions from the categorical exemption by noise. I can't imagine there's, they're not running chippers and equipment here for training purposes, which I think this facility, there's no anticipated noise issue with this, is that correct?
No, this is, we looked at this from a traffic, low traffic, low noise, but we want to make sure that was in the conditions of approval. So, there's no, if that somehow happened or if some other operation is very similar, that that's in the conditions and there's no misunderstandings regarding that.
Great.
And we do have residents across the street.
Yeah. The, that's elevated in comparison with the elevation of this property, right?
Correct.
So, I was just concerned primarily for the boom trucks and all that, there's an even greater issue with those guys looking across and being able to see whatever is popping up above the fence, but they have screening as well, is that correct?
Correct. The planet, let me get to the, right here. This would be the ultimate, because you do have them elevated, so they're going to look over and down and so the, ultimately when the trees get large enough, we'll screen a lot of that view out.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions on, I see there's a condition five on noise that they'll comply with the government code here.
We have standard noise.
Right.
Operating hours also.
And I guess I'm seeing the hours of operation between 6:30 a.m., 6:30 p.m., but with the possibility of going outside those ranges depending on, I would assume the project that they may be working on and vehicles come back a little late. I guess my only concern would be the backup beeping when vehicles are coming in kind of after hours. And associated with that is another condition of a disturbance coordinator. So, the applicant needs to provide for a disturbance coordinator. So, if there is a call because the beeping or whatever, I would assume they call the city. The city says, here, here's the coordinator person, contact them and they'll get it corrected.
Actually, how that works is the disturbance coordinator is mainly set up for when they're doing construction, when you've got construction.
Okay.
All that stuff. So, you know, who to call during that. When they're in operation, generally call code enforcement. Code enforcement calls the manager, you know, and case gets open, case gets closed, try to resolve.
Right.
You know, not backing up. They have room to, if they're going to back up or not back up, room to maneuver around. So, potentially avoid it. It's not 100% avoidable.
Yeah.
But they're not operating at the very late hours.
Okay. And so, 6:30 to 6:30, that's within code for starting up, doing your business, the way you've got to do your business. And then further in under, I think it's C four, it says, no contractor employees store or, you know, vehicles out on the street. Does that mean there's just no parking out on the street? Everybody's got to park on site?
No. We don't want you parking your large trucks out on the street or your equipment out on the street. You know, it's a public street. That would still, I'd have to ask Owen, that would allow, you know, parking of vehicles.
Right.
Right. But we don't want any contractor vehicles, you know, stored out there.
Okay. Got it. That's all the questions I had. Thank you.
So, I have a couple of questions. So, usually we get some maps that show the area and the, like a general plan overview and a zoning overview. Can you talk about what allowed applicant, what are allowed uses on this piece of property and the neighboring properties, please?
All right. So, to the north, this is all county. So, it's single-family and multifamily development. So, currently you have existing single-family here in the county. This was zoned for multifamily. So, this is, you have a vacant lot and I believe these are townhome-type condominium development here. This is the city of Escondido, which is the Montiel Road Development. And to the west on the freeway side, city of San Marcos. So, you've got a variety of commercial, retail. You have similar to ECC, Escondido Cycle Center. You have the Yamaha and you have some shopping centers, inline row shopping centers.
So, are we looking at the extent of the Escondido zoning?
That's it.
Right here?
That was the last piece.
Okay. So, San Marcos to the west.
Is developed out.
The county to the north.
There may be some, I think next door to the North Coast, they do have some potential commercial development potential. They're underdeveloped, some residential in that area.
Okay.
As you move forward, it's developed out.
Okay. So, when I was there, that multifamily, that driveway is terrible. There is no line of sight on that curve.
Oh, come on.
I'm glad we didn't, I'm glad we didn't develop that.
Right. That was one of the things we looked at.
That's terrible. And then I also want to talk about the landscaping.
Yes.
So, along the radius on the freeway, where is the landscaping going? Well, I, let's back up. Is that, the fence is staying, right, with the tan?
Correct.
So, where's the landscaping going in relation to the fence?
Goes on the, on the inside of the fence.
Oh.
Because the fence is right on the property line.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So, so what's the purpose of that landscaping then?
The landscaping is to be consistent with the, you know, the perimeter requirement for the master plan, also to provide that additional screening into the, into the site because you've got outdoor storage and you can't rely on Caltrans to, they may cut trees down, they may landscape back. I don't know what the plan in the future, so they have to be a self-contained, a project and provide their own screening and not rely on somebody else's there.
But the berm is way above their property without any landscaping.
Correct.
So, we can't count on the berm being there either?
It is, it's a plus.
But what, how tall are the trees that they have to plant on their property?
It doesn't, it doesn't specify. Most trees are probably going to get 15 to 20 feet tall.
Oh, so.
So, as you're driving in that berm.
Actually, it's on the bottom of this picture.
Ah, okay.
To the, to the left, you can see that berm and you can see the top of the fence too. So, that's, I'm not sure if that's a six-foot fence or taller than six-foot fence. So, the top of that berm is probably 30 feet.
It's pretty tall.
And so, they can plant trees on their side of that fence and nobody from the highway will ever see those trees.
Let's go to this. See, the, the site is well below, but the berm from the road, it's, I don't know, three, four, five, depends from that. And you can see the views in. So, as those trees get mature, it'll really enhance and it's a requirement of the Montiel Road Development Plan to plant your perimeter with trees. It's in the code.
Okay. But we're here to talk about modifying the code. Every day we modify the code. They ask for a modification to the code. I can understand from this view, you can see the existing house, that structure, but that's because of line of sight. You can't see down where the fence is at all. Okay. What else did I have? You talked about the boom truck. I think that's all my questions. Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item? Kimberly? Do you have any speaker slips? No, no, no. Come on up, sir. You want to speak for the applicant?
Yeah. That's okay. So, my name is Mike Pout. I'm actually the vice president of West Coast Arborist and just grateful to be present with you folks with this unique opportunity to develop a home base here in Escondido. We're excited about that. A little bit about us, we're, you know, been in business for 50 years, which is awesome, and we maintain about 300 public agencies throughout California. And we've actually been working with the city of Escondido since about 2010, helping to provide tree maintenance services and emergency response services as well, not only for Escondido, but for every city here in the county. But with this move, this opportunity here, we feel like we could better service, you know, your, your local residents here is a big part of what we're targeting, is to be able to support the city with their urban forest and support in the event of an emergency, having a more rapid response to get streets cleared, you know, just overall make urban forests safer is a big part of it. We also bring jobs. We are a union company, Local 89. We offer great paying positions that are prevailing wage jobs because we work with public contracts and it's, I just think we're, we're excited for the opportunity to continue to bring in local people for the positions that we have and have them have an awesome career here and just, just wanted to get that out to you all and just, I'm grateful for the opportunity to be heard at today's meeting. So.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other comments, I'll close the portion, the public portion of the meeting and ask for discussion and deliberation.
I would ask staff, following on Commissioner Paul's thoughts, if we were to come to a consensus that the perimeter landscaping on the northern perimeter of the property is not a necessary buffer, do we have the latitude to remove that condition under our conditional use permit?
I think you would probably, it would be a modification to the development standards for the master plan, similar to the land use matrix. It would be, so it would be a recommendation and council would have to authorize that also.
Okay. Thank you.
So, to kind of continue that discussion, are we, is the contemplation to eliminate all the trees along that border adjacent to the freeway or just reduce the number of trees? I guess I'm looking for some clarification of where the commission may be looking to go.
So, so, so when I was, I was there and looked at the landscaping and we have, we have these conditions that there's like a five-foot zone on the side and so the neighboring business has that five-foot zone on the side and it's cobblestone rocks and two trees. And there's, there's really no real landscaping. It's more just like a buffer zone that could be landscaped. And I think that the applicant is a landscaping company and it's going to have the nicest landscape we could possibly imagine. So, I don't know why we would put unnecessary burdens on the business where those trees are not going to shield anything along, along that backside. I think, you know, having the landscaping in the front is great. I think on the, the other side next to the motorcycle place, having landscaping up to the, up to the gate area, that's what's going to be back where the building is, but I don't think there should be any requirement for landscaping beyond that either. The motorcycle place doesn't have that. They have outdoor storage back and they're part of the property back there. And so, landscaping between those two businesses doesn't make any sense and landscaping that nobody can see, that doesn't make sense to me. Because this, we're making the applicant pay money to do that for no reason.
I'm agreeing with your thought process and I would add to that, in a region that's trying to cut back on water usage, it also doesn't make me, make sense to me that we would then obligate the water supply for the landscaping. And I, guess what I said makes sense because you're nodding your head in agreement.
Well, and also I tend to agree because this requirement is, you know, in all sorts of areas across the city and especially in some of the industrial zones as well, that I'm, you know, I'm seeing that. And yeah, the landscaping, all right, well, it gets put in, but over time, that landscaping is done. It's gone. And it truly doesn't seem to serve a purpose, especially on the interior lot lines. I get it from the public's view, but a lot of it, as it's on site, I've seen plenty of sites and it's like, yeah, it's been that way for 30 years and it's a dirt. So, I agree with, with my fellow commissioners that why are we, why does the code, I guess, specify that we need to do this when ultimately it doesn't end up serving the purpose I think that it's intended to?
Exactly.
Now, with that said, we have a code and we have to abide by the code. So, how do, how do we as a body decide what code measures we should maintain and which ones we shouldn't? Seems a little arbitrary.
Well.
So, this is just for discussion, not necessarily at staff. I'm kind of discussing with my fellow commissioners.
Well, I think this application requires a CUP. So, I think in that case it would be easy for us to modify the requirements, my personal opinion.
I'd say we're assuming we understand the rationale for why that's in the code and maybe we do, maybe we don't. We're assuming that this is a screening issue and that's the purpose. We're also assuming that, I'm not convinced there isn't screening that doesn't occur by this. If there is, if there are other reasons for the landscaping to be there other than screening, that may be important to maintain. The other thing I wonder is, we're assuming that this is a burden on the, on the, the business. I would, before we make that assumption, we might want to ask and see what their thoughts are on this. They may prefer to have this in place.
Okay. So, so two things. I asked staff the purpose for the landscaping, so I have to assume that they're telling me the truth. And secondly, if it's not a burden, they'll do it, they'll do it themselves. We wouldn't need to require it if it wouldn't be a burden to them.
So, and I guess that would be a question for staff. Is that the sole purpose of the, of the trees?
Well, it comes, and I'll go back in the history. When the general plan was adopted for the Montiel Road, it included to have extensive landscaping along the Montiel Road because of the residential nature of, in that time, before all these, these were built. It goes back to the 80s and then when I came in in the 90s and then the 2000s. Also, when they were doing the Highway 78 design guidelines and you had a lot of uses along Highway 78 that are old, that you can just look right into and, you know, the contractor storage businesses, the, you've got SDG&E, you have up and along the corridor, you've got the, the, what is it, a lot of agricultural or we've got Superior Ready Mix, those type of uses with that and was trying to get a bigger landscape corridor and beautification along that entire strip. So, that's where those landscape requirements came in for all those businesses along there. Now, you may have case by case where topography may, may assuage some of those issues, where some of them are at the same level, some have a lot more. some of them are at the same level, some have a lot more views in, some have less views in. So, but that's the history of why they have those landscape requirements along the freeway frontages.
Well, I appreciate and understand the basis of this meeting the code. I just think in this particular situation, it's not pertinent. I believe the berm itself is already providing the buffer and as I've said, this is a financial obligation to the property in both providing and the planting of the trees, the maintenance, the water use. And again, we want to conserve water in this region, not use more water. So I would personally prefer to remove that as a condition of the project.
Well, you know, I look at this from a lot of different perspectives. Of course, the cost to the business owners and, you know, trees aren't, they're not inexpensive by any means, but, you know, the company, it sounds like they may have the ability to pick up trees at a wholesale price. I don't know, it's kind of irrelevant, at least at that part, other than the cost aspect. However, we have, yeah, water usage. I don't know how much a tree really uses, it's some, but then we've got greenhouse gas issues that were also, were approved by this body where trees serve to help reduce the greenhouse gas effects. So we've got a whole lot of different things that, that come together and that's how the code is built. Scenic routes, beautification, greenhouse gas, and then you throw in the actual additional cost. Is it really accomplishing what it's intended, which is screening? So it puts us in an odd spot. What I don't want to do is have us start down a pathway of setting precedence, where we're kind of picking and choosing. We've got to be very, very precise, I think, in, in this particular circumstance, because of the berming, because of the elevation change, it's not serving what it is intended to serve. But it's across all of those various items. So it gets a little difficult because of all the various things that we have to look at as a body. So anyway, that's just my two cents. But I get it, you know, it's, if it's not serving the intended purpose, which is screening what's there, then why? It's a tough one.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
You make the motion.
Well.
You introduced the.
Here's, here's maybe what we could, and I just want to toss this out, is maybe reduce, reduce the number of trees. Instead of, I don't know, there's probably 50 trees, maybe not 50, but a good 30, 35 trees there, maybe reduce the, reduce it in half at least. It helps the cost, but it also does some of the other things that we want to do without totally negating the requirement from the code to provide a certain amount of landscaping.
Right, so I think because the business is a landscaper, it's, the property's going to look nice anyway.
I'm concerned with the, you brought up a point, and that is consistency in how we approach this. In this case, yes, there's a conditional use that's, that's bringing this to our attention, but the, the, nobody's asked for this. And in the case that somebody builds next door, in this case, that's not going to happen, but if we're someone to build next door and there isn't a conditional use, then they're, they have to abide by that where these folks didn't. So that's my concern, is that we're, we're making a special case here and doing, suggesting to do something that nobody has asked for. That might be a little bit different treatment for someone else in a different case. That's my concern.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve staff recommendation, including the boom truck addition, last minute addition, but remove the condition for landscaping on the west boundary past, past, below the gate and removing the requirement for landscaping along the arc of the 78 corridor. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Chair Paul.
Yes, approve.
Commissioner Barber.
Yes, approve.
Commissioner McCarroll.
Approve.
Commissioner Spear.
Approve.
Commissioner Wyler.
Yes.
The vote is five to approve.
Thank you. Current business, we have none. Future agenda items, this is opportunity for the planning commissioners to ask something to be added to the agenda? No. Oral communications, last chance, folks, if you want to say anything.
Thank you.
All right?
Thank you.
Planning commissioner comments?
Only that as a member of the Class of 79. I hope you all reserve your spots around the parade route in San Diego when San Diego State brings home the national championship in men's basketball. Ziz Kumbah.
City planners report.
You have a report and your packet from Adam Finestone and nothing else to share this evening.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
All in favor? I, thank you, everyone.